Good morning. Today is July 31st, 2019. It's nine o'clock in the morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners to order. Please rise for the plates.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning. We'll move on to item three. Any citizen desiring to be heard? Here we go. Item four, consideration of possible action on approving minutes of July 15th, 2019.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second my motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item five, consideration of possible action to award bid number 2019-CDBG-1 tabled from July 15th, 2019.
Millie couldn't be here today. We sent the request to Department of Commerce to award to a single bidder. I received a letter of approval back, so the grant authorizers have approved just the single bid. So the bid that we received was from Atlas Paving in the amount of $236,000.
Well, I'll make the motion that we award the bid. Sec two, Atlas. Have a motion and a second to award the bid to Atlas for $236,000. It's a single bid. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
These are two spots for Marvin to sign.
Okay. All right. Item six, consideration of possible action to approve, excuse me, notice of contract award for CDBG contract number 17258, CDBG 18. I'll make the motion. Excuse me. Heard a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item seven, consideration of possible action to select a commissioner to attend a meeting with the Logan County Public Schools Transportation Managers to be hosted by Guthrie Public Schools. I'll talk with Dr. Simpson, and he's agreed to host said deal before school starts, so we can kind of figure out where their, where the bus routes are going to be at throughout the county, if they've changed, or if there are plenty differences to give our road districts a little bit of a heads up as those things change, and also to kind of have a little discussion about, you know, we're all kind of here to do the same thing, you know, we're all here to support the people that live here, right? And so, school transportation's important. Roads that we drive them on are as important as the transportation issues. So, that's one of the things that Dr. Simpson thought would be a good thing, would be to get together offsite. He's agreed to host it and have folks come in. So I'll offer that for consideration and discussion.
Well, if you've already been talking to him, I'd say you can go represent the county.
Is that a?
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
Or don't mean whatever you want to do.
Okay. Was that a second, Ma?
I guess I'll second. When are these meetings going to be at? Are they going to?
I don't, well, I don't know yet.
Till they see where their kids are going to be after enrollment, I guess? Or they're doing that now?
Yeah, they are. They're getting all that together. It'll probably, there'll probably be something put together next week, I would assume, around the start of school when the transportation managers are able to look at. You know, they look at the enrollment, and then they look at where, you know, the enrollment population's at, and then they start, and they do that. But we'll, we'll figure that out. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. I'll aye myself on that one. Thank you, guys. I'll report back on that as soon as we have our first meeting. Item eight, consideration of possible action to approve annual financial statement for FY 1819. Troy sent this out. This is something new that the auditors are asking us to do, and it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of going toward what I think is a good idea. It's basically said, this is the county's financial statement, right? This is what we got. Doesn't show what our liabilities are, but it shows our assets. That's a good start.
Yep. So, the format is for the chairman to sign. I did email it off. If y'all have any questions, I'll try to explain.
These are all our accounts.
Those are all the different funds, because, you know, our money is assigned to specific funds for specific purposes.
Right. The thing I like about that is it's not just the county general fund in there, right? It's all of our cash funds, and it shows an accounting of everything. Again, I think it's a, a good financial statement.
I'll make the motion, we approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let's see. Item eight, consideration of possible action to approve, oh, we already did the item eight. Never mind. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve inter-agency agreement with Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality for environmental officer program for FY 2019-2020. Why didn't you put this on there?
Yeah, I did. It's really a good deal. The funds are a little deputy over there.
Yes, this year, with the budget cuts and DEQ and everything, they're not funding as much than they're funding, I think it was $18,000 or something like that is what they're funding. I don't have the document in front of me.
$13,000 for wages, $5,000 for equipment, for a total of 18.
So we're going to have to pick up the cost and what into that, but I still think it's a viable program.
I agree. I'll make a motion.
Chairman signs.
I'll second.
Almost got the board.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We're going. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Get this signed, and we'll get on to the other one. Signature, person, offer. You made the motion.
That's it. I'm just muzzling myself.
All right. Item 10, consideration of possible action to approve detention services agreement with United States Marshal Service for housing inmate.
I'm on to that one, too.
Yeah, it's singular inmate, one, right?
Inmates.
We recently sat down with the marshals, negotiated the new daily rate. It went from $57 to $63 a day, and negotiated a, a transport rate that went from $20 to $25 an hour for transport.
So the, the first rate went down a bit, and then the transport went up?
No, the first rate was 57. It has gone to 63.
Oh, okay.
I need your signature on these four copies as well. When I met with Lowell last week, we just happened to realize there was a spot over here for local government to certify. It didn't have it listed as a signature, but when you read it, it does. So we're going to have Marvin, as chairman, sign. Lowell and I talked about that, and then I need you to sign on this other.
Damon, you said that was $25 an hour? Is there any mileage on that as well?
There's miles, just federal rate.
So, really quick, we, we, I mean, they don't do all of our inmate transportation and all that stuff. How often, I guess what I'm looking at is utilization. How often do we utilize their services at that rate? I mean, it's not a constant.
Well, we don't pay them, they pay us. We're providing the services.
Yes. Oh.
This is big costs.
I, never mind.
Sorry.
I, I had red numbers in my eyes instead of green numbers.
So, US partials really like her because?
It is.
There's very good security in it.
I mean, we approve.
And we meet the threshold on what they're looking for, and we have quarterly audits. They come in to walk through, see if there's any deficiencies. That's why, you know, we do the walkthrough with you guys, you know, I mean, it's pretty short way, because we have to keep that way in order to keep the contact with marshals. There's things that they ask of us to do to maintain and do things in our facility to make sure that we keep them happy, because they are a big generator.
Well, and this is part of the income for the guards there.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, everything.
I think, I think the overall view there is that you guys try and treat everybody as humans, and you're, and just doing that satisfies the requirement for the marshal service. I mean, it's not something special you're done for the marshal service. I know that, and I know you didn't mean to say anything different than that. You guys did a great job over there, what you do first. So, I've got a motion and a second on item 10.
Go ahead. How many, average, how many did you have?
It varies from 45 to 50. I think we're contracted to 55. Really do hit that number. So it's, it's, we typically run 45 to 50 between males and females.
Okay, so the last question I have has to do with budgeting, right? So, as, as we have these, there's a lot of smaller counties, and it's not very many smaller than Logan County as far as budget, but there are a few, that count on this kind of income to keep the jail open. What happens if we, we no longer have those 50 federal inmates in our county jail?
Then basically, the, if, if we were to lose that federal contact, we would probably diminish services by half without additional funding from the county.
Additionals half? I'm having a...
Yeah, so basically, if the marshals pulled out, that'd be a huge revenue stream that we no longer have. So we would probably cut our services in half across the board.
At the jail?
Probably. Control, too.
Okay. So, what funding?
Well, you figure average $85,000, $90,000 a month.
Yeah, that's a nice little shot in the arm. Thanks, Damon. So we have a motion.
That's not all profit.
No, it's not.
There's a cost to feeding and the medical care and all that is provided. It comes out of that 63 a day.
Actually, what, what the sheriff just said was he has to double his staff to do this.
In order to maintain?
Right, and I, that's kind of where, where I was going with that. And, and I appreciate your comments, sir, Damon, really do. So, we have a motion and a second for item 10. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes without objection. Thanks, Damon. Item 11, consideration of possible action to approve FY 2019-2020 city council defensive agreement tabled from July 15th. I'm the one, I asked for this one to be tabled. My, my concern, and I guess, is that anytime we start splitting employees across different organizations, metropolitan and countywide, especially when you talk about emergency management, I'm just curious, I didn't see in the agreement an order of priority, an order of precedence. If we have a countywide emergency that affects the county and, and the municipality, who, who does our coordinator take direction from? I'm just...
Well, seeing as it's a county, I'd say county.
Well, but he's not county. He's county, and he's municipality. He's got it where he wants to be.
Say 65% is county.
Well, yeah, so 65% of a 100% disaster is 35% less than what we need when we need it. I mean, I, I'm kind of trying to figure out what the logic of this is, and although I, I will make a motion to approve the current contract, I, I do want us to think about this and, and give a little more thought as we go forward into next year's contract with the city on this. So, saying that, I do make a motion, we approve item alone.
I'll second.
You go ahead, sign these before that table.
I think we need to renegotiate, because the quantity of employee goes up purely, and I think they need to.
Well, yes, and I agree. In discussion, I, I think our emergency manager ought to be closely tied to our county sheriff as far as emergency management within the county. Not that he should take direction from the sheriff, he takes directions from the Board of Commissioners, but when the Board of Commissioner says, I want you to follow the county sheriff around and help with managing emergencies we have in our county, and that's kind of the way I think we should do it. Anyway.
Does he get two paychecks?
We have, we have, sir?
Does he get two paychecks? One from us, one from the city?
No, the funding for the city goes back into county general to offset part of the cost.
But that offset allows a door to be opened for the city to say, we need them to do this, this, and this for us, which those scopes of work, they had not been identified.
That is an emergency manager.
Right.
I agree.
Anyway, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes without objection. Thank you. Item 12, consideration of possible action to approve juvenile detention services agreement for FY 2019-2020 with ROC MD Area Youth Services at $25 a day.
I'll make the motion, I approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Is that you, Ma? Yes, that's it.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13, consideration of possible action to approve resolution implementing through traffic size restriction of trucks traversing certain county roads as listed. I'll get to that as soon as I get my signatures on this. Okay. So, back on the 15th of May, we discussed this topic. Had Trooper Break here and some others. If anybody that's interested, we've got, here's the copy of the minutes from that meeting. Anybody needs clarification? Okay, so what, what we've looked at, and what I've been talking with Trooper Break about, and Damon, a bit, is how we implement a restriction on the types of vehicles or the classifications of trucks traversing our county roads that were never intended for trucks of that size, without using weight scales, without the ability, without weighing them out. And there is a way, and there's a way legally, that we restrict them by type of truck. And what I mean by, is, okay, so we restrict by class, all right? So, classes of trucks by the Department of Transportation, gross vehicle weight rating. You got light duty, medium duty, and heavy duty. So the separation between medium and heavy is 26,000 pounds, right? So, and that's, and that, that can be visually looked at, and the gross vehicle weights are on commercial vehicles or on the side of the vehicle, so there's no argument about that, right? So, Alfalta County did a similar thing to what we're proposing, what I'm proposing here, and that is that they posted something similar to this. No through trucks over 26,000 pounds. And that's kind of what I'm proposing, that we do in these areas that we've identified.
So how do you term this, through truck, not through truck?
Well, that, that's, that's a pretty good one, right? So if the, if, we got an 18-wheeler traversing north off Waterloo Road toward Highway 33, he gets stopped by county sheriff. Says, where you going? With a truck loaded full of travel at 80,000 pounds. Where you going? Well, I'm going right up the road here, and I'm going to make the left and go in and end up at here. Well, that's not through traffic. That's, he needed to go there to do business. He had business in that area.
Or you tell him, I ain't know his business. This is America.
He can, he can do all that, right? And then he can get a ticket and be on Channel 5.
Fair place to be.
So how does this affect the county trucks?
Not at all. There's a commercial trucks. This is a restriction on commercial vehicles only. Doesn't affect county trucks, doesn't affect fire trucks, doesn't, emergency vehicles, first responders, none of that. Doesn't have anything to do with them.
Trash trucks?
So, trash trucks, again, it's for through traffic, right? If a trash truck's coming in to pick up trash, that's not through, that's not through traffic, that's, they're doing business in there.
But if they were going somewhere, and then coming back on Broadway, like Broadway would be through.
Right? Sir? Broadway would be through traffic for trash trucks.
If he was going from 33 to Waterloo Road, that would be through.
Yes.
So he can't do it.
Correct. Got to take I-35 or Highway 74. This is a recommendation by, by Trooper Break. Either that, or, or we lose all of our asphalt roads down here. I mean, it's just, they can't take it anymore.
Yeah, well, my, my, I just hate putting rules and regulations on everybody that, I mean, Broadway is kind of a maiden.
Right. All those other ones in green there are paved roads that don't need 80,000-pound trucks on them. They're, they're already coming apart, and if we allow, allow that traffic to continue, we're not going to be able to keep up as a county. That's the third fastest-growing area in Oklahoma, right down there, and we need residential traffic through there. We don't need commercial truck traffic in there.
What kind of restrictions does Oklahoma County have? I'm not sure. Okay.
Well, it's your district. I'll support it, if that's what you want to do, but, all right, I can tell you, I'm not crazy, man.
Well, I appreciate your support.
In fact, I've had quite a bit of flack back at me, so, um, you know, when they start reading this by people, I'm kind of like...
My thing, I had a lady call me, and she's concerned, but I think you answered the question. If she picks up gravel out of TJ Campbell, and as long as she has a delivery ticket, where she's going, she's okay.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, she, you can't keep her from doing business in there.
Right.
But she's going to be around 28,000, so I was kind of curious how you come up with 26,000.
26,000 is the separation there, yes.
That's your deal.
So, and that's why I came up with 32,000 on Wood Road, and, and trying to keep the old trucks kind of from tearing it up, but of course, they went down a different one for it, but, the reason why I put it at 32,000 was to accommodate trash trucks. But you're saying that trash trucks are immune from this?
Because they're doing business in there.
Right. Well, that'd be Logan County, so they basically don't have any restrictions on it.
No, that's not what it means.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It means if there's a big trash truck that weighs 60,000 pounds, and he starts off at Waterloo Road and ends up on Highway 33, never stops, when he comes through Broadway, he should get ticketed.
So, it's...
It's not a through street for, for commercial loads over 26,000 pounds. It's, it's a restriction. It's not a shortcut. Anyway.
It's your district. I don't want to dictate.
You know, I don't have anything but negatives coming back at me about this, so I'm kind of like, not ready to do this at this time.
Okay, so I have, so that's a motion?
I won't make the motion, but I'll second yours.
Okay, so I'll make the motion, that's a second. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, as far as the district attorney's office is prosecuting these citations, do we sit down and talk to them?
Yes, yes, we have.
And what we've done? Tire somebody or divert somebody off other deputy?
Well, we're not going to send somebody down there, you know, as we traverse the county. We'll run it for it, but it's not going to be...
But you're going to have a waiting guy.
Not yet, but I am talking to the sheriff, that's willing to donate some scales to us.
They're not going to wait on mine.
Yeah, we don't need scales to do this. So, I've seconded, or I've made the motion, Mommy seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. All right. Motion passes. Two, one. Thank you, Mommy. Item 14, consideration of possible action to approve resolution accepting $250,000 donation from Shannon Cantor.
Chairman, you might have that dollar amount again.
250.
250? Oh, excuse me, $250 donation. Casman, all right. $600 donation from Norman Pierce, $600 donation from Donna Payne to District 32.
Number two.
All right.
Number three. Mark off the two. You're going to haul that gravel?
I saw this, I knew this was going to happen. For gravel to be placed on Oak Valley Drive.
Because you know, when you type pass and that shift key doesn't hold long enough to hit that?
Yeah, you're great.
Well, that's the next time.
There'll be more coming in.
I'll make the motion, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item 15, consideration of possible action to approve resolution accepting $593.70 donation from Caleb Levitt to District 2 for culvert to be placed at 11333 South Henni.
That would be District 2. For that tenure. Putting in on Henni. I'll make the motion. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Item 16, consideration of possible action to acknowledge receipt of notice of tort claims from Frankie Daniel II and Shannon Ward, and forward to echo claims.
All move that we acknowledge and extend to active.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 17, consideration of possible action to appoint April Heaton to the Casson 522 EMS board.
This is the only applicant?
Yeah, that's a seat that's been open for a very, very, very long time.
I'll make the motion, we approve.
I'll second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 18, consideration of possible action to approve resolutions appointing requisitioning officers to various accounts.
I have one for Langston Farming. I have one for Langston Farm.
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item nineteen, consideration of possible action to approve resolution appointing receiving officers to various accounts.
I have one for Twin Lakes Farm.
I'll make the motion to approve. That over near area. I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item twenty, consideration of possible action on approving the following road, permanent road crossing permits, Cox Cable, Parallel Seward Road, twenty-one miles east of Oak Hill, two thousand three hundred and forty feet west of the northwest corner of Tan Range Fifteen North to West. I guess that would be section ten. And Navigator SMS pipeline.
I guess you're okay with it, you signed it. I'll make the motion.
Make the motion. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-one, consideration of possible action on consent agenda.
Got the group pinned together.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
It might be.
Understand that? If we owe, we owe.
Yeah, if we owe. Top four.
Do you have your, uh, drive-through map right now? Just one page?
Absolutely. You have them?
Okay.
And you have this? That's the list.
Oh, that's the list, okay.
Yeah.
And to that, no, I wrote, is this District One?
Yes, sir.
These are do- Which is highlighted, which is green?
Those are the asphalt roads highlighting the green with the restrictions being enforced.
Okay, yes, sir.
The reason I use greens to red, which would normally be-
Red, go.
Is that the ODOT map, they use red to denote an asphalt road, so they're all-
Gotcha.
Yeah. Which was a good choice by then because they're all crumbling, so.
Six. Uh, Treasury employees, are they part-time or?
Two of them are. I, I don't know which claim you're looking at. Rosalie and Peggy, um, are part-timers. They alternate which days.
That answers my question.
Transfers, we do not have any here's blankets.
Can't see the stop there, too.
Absolutely.
I'm not gonna do my votes.
Absolutely, sure. So Damon, those, that one grew. This one go into effect till we actually get the signs.
Sure.
And, and, once we get the signs up, then we'll send the official notification to, was it Troopess? Or which one is it that?
Uh, the side of the lights.
Yeah, yeah. And, and register with them, and once that's done, then it'll be, they'll be able to enforce them along with everybody else.
Well, I, you know, as far as, you know, I'm thinking of the statute.
Yes, sir.
As far as what the number's gonna be.
The numbers?
Yeah, as far as the statute that we write on the citation.
I, that's, that's on the resolution.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, yeah. That's what Troy and I were going through and, and we were, I said, "Well, the preamble has to quote the statutes" "that, that we're using," and, and so that's what it is. We, we got it, yes, sir.
Yeah, if I get a copy of that, the resolution, I'd be great.
Five bucks.
Processing fee.
Yeah.
Follow through decision about the implement anyway.
I don't know that, okay? Yeah, we do that.
So these trucks are taking these, the side roads to the shortcut to where they're going?
What, what they do is, um, they, they bounce the shortest, they take the shortest route they can to where they're, where, where they're going. So if they're going from, uh, the rock mills and the asphalt mills on Waterloo Road and they're going north, they'll, they'll take Broadway before they'll drive over I thirty-five and risk getting on the interstate highway because if they're a pound overweight there, they're gonna get pounded.
Oh.
And, so they, they kinda use county roads to hide their somewhat questionable loads in-
Technicals, the backroads.
Right. Rock, oh, I get it. Crack, rock, it's, it's same good.
Ice.
Ice. Now, that's Oklahoma County deal. That's-
Oh, yeah.
Different deal.
Yeah.
We still sign this thing.
Do they take these east-west roads?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. They'll, they'll, they'll pull off, they'll go up, if they're going out of Casson side, they'll pull up and go north to Charter Oak. Take Charter Oak out, across seventy-four up to seven, it's, yeah, it's, they use them all.
Marvin?
Yes, sir.
Is that because they know they're overloaded and if they get caught on seventy-four or?
No, I think it's, well, maybe a little bit of that, but I think it's more of, you know, human nature is to do the, the least amount that we can to get where we're going, what we need done, and they're gonna take the shortest route. That's just human nature, take the shortest route they can to do that.
It's a cost factor.
And it is a cost factor, yes. That cost is transferred to the county taxpayers. Two ways. One, in the taxes we pay to almost fix the roads. And also in the cost we pay to fix our automobiles for driving on roads that should be fixed. So I don't feel bad about it at all. Protecting the taxpayers' investment.
So how soon will this sign start going up?
Probably, I'm thinking before, I mean, realistically, it's probably about a two-week project for us to get them in, uh, get them identified where they need to be and, and, and get them up.
Those were the elections that claimed for one of the signs?
Yes.
Alcoholic beverage tax. Get your camera.
Next week. Security, security won't be any, will it be any tighter with the trial starting or just, I don't know.
Huh? Where'd you go to sleep in that?
Is it, you're going to back to boot?
The hell's-
And even that probably shouldn't just be thrown out in the wind.
Is that Fourth of July or? That's the set he was concerned about.
Oh, alcohol?
You put that on your page. They were celebrating.
Do we go over twenty thousand?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
What's it been running? Has it been going up or?
There's, the, the months before are usually the slowest times of the year, not to have a scratch on it, but, uh, fifteen thousand, but now, anything over twenty's really good. The best, best ever was like December, it was like twenty-eight.
So we saw a real drop when they started selling it out of convenience.
Over a hundred percent, a hundred fifty.
The dungeon is too good for it.
Good deal.
I don't think Troy's gonna be a qualified juror member.
I think we ought to bring back that, that, or bring forward from the future that deal called Running Man. You understand where I'm going with that?
I feel like the town's a burden for him.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Hey, there you go. We got a nice little grassed lawn tree right there.
The name is probably used, too.
The alcoholic beverage tax was the last item on the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda. Any further discussion? Other than, I'm still signing a whole bunch of this stuff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I will continue with this and we'll move on to consideration of possible action on approving claims for payment for July twenty-nineteen.
You just don't look at any jurors. You better get there early to find a parking spot.
Early day.
Yeah, early day. We might be down like at two-thirty or one-thirty. We go through the thirty, three thirty. Cause I think they'll- Yeah, they'll weed out pretty quick, I think, though.
No, there's things, we never stop. My payroll clerk got called, well, there's no way.
Well, my wife was in, she got called the first time. I was like, whoa, next day.
Just don't tell, just don't tell anybody who you're with.
Yeah.
Ava Moffett.
She get up on there. It's really the first time that they called for jury trial.
Oh.
Yeah, they went out last week.
Did they?
Yeah, middle of the week.
I got, I got called for one of them and I had to call Cheryl and say, "Really?" She goes, "Yeah, it's probably not a good job, but good thing that we have a newspaper guy in the pool and we can't get you up the stairs so that, yeah, I think you're excused."
Yeah, I just got called up, too.
Let me send you the email.
At that?
Yeah.
I will. I don't like it, but yeah.
Cheryl, sometimes she looks at some of them, she knows.
One time I was the buck and a quarter.
She got it.
All right. I did it, I'll take it.
I got a few coming.
We're really gonna make a concerted effort in the next several months to knock this crap off, as much as- Cannibalism on, if it happens, I get it, but goodness sake.
So did you go over in the last thirty seconds and get taken out?
I'll make the motion, we have approved the claim. I have a motion and a second to approve claims. Any further discussion? Hearing now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, motion passes without objection. If they got one clip on, just one signature, that's all they have. Item twenty-two, consideration of possible action to approve key card purchases for July.
Seven hundred nine dollars ninety-nine cents.
Time would, fine day.
Sure, actually, I have a simple-
I'll spend the county this month on-
Sign this all.
I'll spend the county this month on Amazon. I got new equipment coming, I had new equipment coming in.
Cool. Got new toys?
I did.
You got new toys coming.
If only it really paid to recycle cardboard, I would have life made.
Yes. I would this week.
Yeah, I did quite few.
How much motion we approve the key card payment? Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Period, none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item twenty-four, any citizens desiring to be heard?
Yes.
I didn't mind my day. I just got to update the county commissioners on our E-911 system, uh, July twenty-second. We went live and it's fully functional, operational, and I'd like to thank all of you for helping us get that accomplished.
July twenty-second?
Yes, it was live, so we have.
Yeah, it's called.
A full E-911 system now, so.
What system?
E-911, enhanced 911.
Oh.
So that was the last big project that I dispatched to, to get that. It's, it's working.
So congratulations, Sheriff, I mean, it's been, yeah, it's been what, a year and a half ago when you first took over there and come in and go, uh, here's a picture of my 911 system and it was a phone, analog phone and a, and a skitch pad. And that was it. I mean, and we really, as a county, needed to improve that and I, I congratulate you on getting that done. Great deal. Thanks for the county.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Citizens desiring to be heard. Going once, going twice, all right. Item twenty-five, comments, announcements, questions by the board of county commissioners. Aye?
Um, faced another road yesterday, pine. Uh, look at the road. Utilities are being moved as we speak, should be completed by this fall. That road will be ready, shovel ready. Can't think of anything else on my end of it.
Okay, thank you, Monty.
Uh, CED meeting, uh, we voted to allocate a hundred thousand dollars to each county, so we all got thirty-three thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars. If y'all have a project, if not, I'll be glad to use it for you. Randy Robinson's gonna sit in as the intern until we find a CED manager or find someone to contract with. I really thought that was kind of a conflict myself, but majority rules, so that's where we're at. Looking for a CED manager and trying to get Carol paid out and she's officially retired, I think, today, so. Yep, I hope she enjoys her retirement.
Yeah, I, I also, thank you, anything else?
That's it.
Yeah, I also think it's probably a conflict when the guy that thought it was a good idea to give five thousand dollars to ODOT for, to buy copies of their seventy-fifth, uh, or fiftieth annual, um, celebration book to give away. Spend five thousand dollars of taxpayers' money to, to give those away to people that don't have any, I mean, as gifts. I mean, why do we need to be given gifts, using taxpayers' money for gifts instead of roads and bridges? I don't, I don't understand it. Anyway, thank you, Sheriff, we'll, we'll have that in. Do we, would you think that by our next meeting, we ought to be able to have our projects together to be able? Because I think the board, our board needs to approve those as they go forward.
Yeah, I think Carol sent everybody an application, so I'll, I'll have that on the next agenda, so.
Good.
When you say the next meeting, since there's three of, are you gonna have a project for that thirty-three K?
I'm thinking we ought to put it on there that I have to pay back on CBRI, so yeah.
I don't know that we can, I don't know that that would qualify on that project, will it?
I think it will. Well, we can use it for anything you want.
Yeah. Really, they like to have before national pictures, but.
Okay, so in, in light of that, so I'm understanding how we're gonna process that. Are we gonna wanna pull that thirty-three with the CBRI so that it reimburses back or? I'm, I'm trying to figure out how I'm gonna add a third piece of money on that one.
Is, is that something we can discuss at the meeting when we talk about projects and how it's gonna be?
Okay, which brings me, when you say next meeting, do you mean Monday or the fifteenth?
The fifth. Fifteenth. Fifth, Monday the fifth.
Because we are gonna have to have it resolved by the fifteenth, so.
Exactly. Yeah, we need to have.
Stick it on there for the meeting.
Our, our board needs to approve what we wanna take forward this next month before the CED meeting, yeah?
So, yeah.
Thanks, Monty.
All right, and then I have a couple items. I would like for the, for the board to chew on this, we need to think about adding a six-month laden place contract to, on our laden place contract to include an option for ten-inch asphalt base repair by the, by the square yard. And that's, I mean, that's becoming more and more of an issue as, as we look at laden place, you can go in, we've got base odors on, on roads on a mile. And if we're able to, to also contract for that base repair by the square yard, at a depth, at a depth that we can agree on, that could be an average cost, right? Like ten, a ten-inch base repair, that's what Atlas does. That's what they quoted. Anyway, I, I want us to all think about that and I would like to discuss that, uh, at our next meeting as well, is if we think that would be a good idea to add that too, and that'll give Troy time enough to figure out if I'm, if we're proposing something that's against the law. She's good about keeping us safe.
No, I guess the only, well.
Go ahead.
My, my, the first thing that popped in my head is we have a bid that's good through the end of the year. So are you looking at the next one or you're wanting to redo the current one in place?
So what I would propose would, it would be a, an incremental change. And, and that would be to add, um, a six-month, uh, base repair, uh, contract.
Is this separate from the laden place?
Separate from the laden place and then combine the two when we, when we get to that point. That's kind of what my thoughts were. All right, uh, item twice on my list here. Are we, we done with that one? Uh, the county auction. Where we at? Where we at on our county auction?
Um, nowhere at this point.
Right. When are we supposed to have that done?
Well, actually, we had hoped it would be this coming weekend, but, um, there wasn't a whole lot of cooperation. So, um.
We're pretty much tied up with flood issues.
And there's been a lot of things that created that. And I think that it's also, you know, a hundred degrees outside and, and I think pushing it to fall, um, is, is probably the best bet. I also, um, in the discussions, I did have in trying to locate a, or secure an auctioneer. We had discussed having two separate auctions, one weekend for just the vehicles that were out at District Two and then one for the small office items and stuff. Here's what I'll tell you, we don't have enough of the small office items financially to make that pay because the auctioneer isn't going to garner enough for, from a commission, so they're gonna wanna pay a flat fee and we have to absorb the cost of all the advertising. So my recommendation is throw it all together as has been done in the past where everything's hauled out. District Two's where most of the vehicles are stored, so if we don't do the auction there, then we have to pay to tow them.
Can we maybe put this on the agenda for like the fifteenth of August to discuss moving this into the fall, fall, fall pre-winter when it's cooler and, because I think that's a good idea to, to move it back because as Monty pointed out, you know, we've been covered up with emergency stuff and, and we appreciate all the help and, and that we've been getting, but it's.
Oh, absolutely.
The priority's been on other places, but, but yeah, if we could, maybe the fifteenth of August, we could talk about this, uh, in a little greater detail. Thank you, man. And then the other thing that came out that I wanted to draw your attention to is the ODOT, uh, county equipment revolving fund. Needs to be, uh, uh, have some sort of a board action done on it as well. The, uh, ODOT sent those out to, I think, everybody here, I'm not sure. I got a copy, I sent a copy to Troy. Uh, if you need one, please let her know if you're involved in that. And if not, then we need to get, but we still need to get that on our agenda.
Only if you're going to be purchasing equipment.
Right.
What, do you remember what their interest rate is on that?
Too much. It's more than we, it's more than we give ourselves in, in our, in our county vehicle trust.
Has to be to ODOT, I think it was October first, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not interested in that business.
I like what you think, Monty. All right. So that's all I have, so I will entertain a motion for item twenty-six.
I have one other I thought I'd bring up real quick. Got a lot of interim studies that are gonna be going on before the legislators meet. And, uh, one thing I was noticing was that Senator Greg Crick, who's a senator from Tim, is having one on county home rule. I didn't know if you guys want to participate in that or not.
Care anything about supporting county home rule?
Yeah. County home rule. And of course Senator Tree is one of the nine senators representing Oklahoma counties. So, uh, Oklahoma County doesn't have too many roads, is the way I figure it, and so I just figured they're wanting to increase bureaucracy and grow government or whatever. Anyway. Just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
All right.
Is that all, Mike?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. Item twenty-six, consideration of possible action for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.